Hello there. It's time once again to get a report from the city of Pikeville in the form of a commissioner's report. We have with us a new guest today and looking forward to picking your mind Barry Chaney to find out how the commission works and what the Pikeville City Commission is dealing with and how they're taking care of it.
Well, thank you Homer. I look forward to talking about all the things we've got going on.
Here we go. Barry Chaney is a third-term city commissioner now in your fifth year of serving on the commission. He's a native of Rattles Creek. We consider you a Pikeville native if you're anywhere within shouting distance of the city and you certainly are. He is a former chairman of the Unite Board, Unite Pike?
Unite Pike and...
Tell us something about Barry Chaney.
Well, you know Barry Chaney grew up on Rattles Creek, went to Mullins High School, played football, basketball down there and I am wearing my University of Pikeville pin down there.
I noticed that.
They're gonna give Louisville a licking down there in the Yum Center.
That's tonight, the day that we're taping which is Wednesday and they do play at the Yum Center tonight. Are you going by the way or did you go?
No, I've got to work and so I'm gonna miss it but I'll probably get it taped. I hope my wife will tape that for me.
Absolutely. What else do we need to know about Barry Chaney before we go into Pikeville city business?
Well, like I said, I went to Mullins High School. I've always worked. I started working when I was about 11 years old doing odd jobs around for other people, cutting my own grass and my mom's grass and my uncle owned a furniture store. He'd always come down and get me to put his bicycles together and my grandfather would come and get me and take me and do odd jobs around.
What motivated Barry to seek out the commissioner's seat?
Well, I've always had an interest in public service. One time when I was sixth grade, my grandfather came and picked me up and told me we had to go help Brother Grover win the election on election day and he took me and dropped me off down at Mullins High School and I handed out flowers about Grover Aggins and then about noon he came and got me and took me up to the State Highway Garage and I finished the day out up there. It's something that just piqued my interest and when I was 25 I ran for magistrate of District One and lost by 74 votes to a very fine man named Cam Allen. And it's something that I've always wanted to do and I really had kinda thought about not running again for anything but with my service with Lifeline and Unite Pike and seeing a lot of the needs in town, I decided that I might give it a try and I voiced my desire to run to my sisters and wife and a few friends and they all encouraged me so I gave it a try.
Is your service on the Pikeville City Commission all you thought it would be or hoped it would be?
Well, it exceeds everything I thought it would be.
Is that in a positive sense?
That is in a very positive sense. It's just unbelievable what has come about, the progress that's being made and it's been a very positive experience for me.
The excitement of it is, has to be tempered somewhat with the disappointments that are involved in any ongoing enterprise and the city of Pikeville is humming with a lot of activities. Are you able to deal with any of those setbacks or disappointments?
Well, you know, there's really not that many disappointments. We have a battle every now and then but it seems like we're always able to work through it. We have a great team. We have a lot of respect for one another and it seems like it always allows us to hear each other's opinion and we always come out with a good and workable solution.
Give us a little bit of educational insight into how the city commission of Pikeville is set up. How many members are there? Who's the mayor, the city manager of their duties?
Well, there are four commissioners. The commissioner receiving the most votes in the election is Mayor Protim who would substitute for the mayor in his absence and that is Jimmy Carter followed by Gene Davis who's the oldest-serving commissioner and followed by Dallas Lane who's a great man, all those great men and then myself. I'm the baby on there.
And who takes care of most of the day-to-day operation?
Well, that's the city manager. We have a city manager form of government and he is to execute our budget.
Well, there's the background folks of the report from a city commissioner. I'm gonna take the agenda from Monday and let's go down some of the items that you dealt with only a few days ago, maybe the 22nd I believe.
Yes, sir.
The US-23 sanitary sewer project phase two. Can you explain to us what that is?
Well, that is the sewer system going up Lackens Branch and that'll come out and go up through, up on Coeur d'Alene Hill and go to the edge of the Billups Development down there and that'll provide sewer for a great number of homes and we'll pick up some more going through Coeur d'Alene or Coeur d'Alene Hill.
What was the action taken on that project Monday night?
Well, we voted to pay the $73,087 that was owed on that project and to get it completed.
The second item on the agenda from your most recent meeting, Texas Roith House Project.
Well, now this $382.50 is an old bill and it just cleans up some things that was that we hadn't paid off down there.
No new action taken concerning that property or that business?
Oh, no. Just to eat there when I can.
Eat there when you can get reservations. The next item on the agenda, and I want to thank Al Greenfield for providing me with this information, under the heading of City Attorney Rusty, the city attorney, what was he dealing with here? Pikeville at Winston Drive, Cottonwood Court and Red Bud Lane. What was that about?
Well, that's just naming of two streets up on a new development up on Cedar Creek going up the hill. So those, the property owner wanted to name those two streets Cottonwood Drive and Red Bud Lane, which Red Bud Lane is very appropriate for the one.
If nothing else, this agenda with the number of items on it points out the different aspects of topics you deal with for the city of Pikeville and we're coming up on one now that is currently in some state of being resolved. The commercial air service grant for Pikeville and the entities that are associating with Pikeville in that endeavor. Can you give us an update on that?
I can Homer and I'll tell you, this is a big development for Pikeville. Well, for the whole area in fact. The $750,000 grant, we won that. We were competing with 69 other cities across the country and we were deemed the best location to receive this grant money. And this gives us one part of three parts to move forward to get our service, commercial air service here in Pikeville. And we only have 18 months to do it. There'll be a travel bank set up which local businesses and corporations will invest, say $10,000 and they have two years to use that money up in travel. But that money, a half a million dollars has to be there. And then the third part of that will be a million dollars worth of coal severance. But it's a high price but it's a big investment for an airline and they have to have this financial package together before an airline can be recruited because this is a very expensive endeavor for them. And in the downturn in the markets in the developed country, it's gonna be tough to get somebody to come and expand in this market right now.
Would it be fair to characterize this grant, $750,000 as seed money as far as research, marketing, recruiting of an airline?
Yes, yes, it would be fair to say that but not limited to that. But you know, I might go on and say, you know, this having commercial air service here in Pikeville and for a region and there, we're gonna be serving a 13-county region. Nine counties in Kentucky, one in West Virginia and two in Virginia. In that 13-county region, there is $5.1 billion on deposit in banks. It has 52% of the natural gas reserve in the nation and probably some of the largest coal reserve in the nation. So this is a rich energy area. Our service gives us an opportunity to recruit businesses into this area. It puts us on a level playing field with Lexington, with Charleston, with Huntington, with Tri-Cities, Kingsport and Johnson City and Bristol and gives us probably the greatest opportunity to recruit jobs that pay a living wage and this is something I'm very excited about.
I'm assuming that all your research and the quotes of the stat you just gave me indicates there is a market to do this or you wouldn't be pressing ahead?
Yeah, there is a market to do it. There'll be two flights a day, one in the morning, one in the evening and this airline, once you get on this airline, you can go right into a secure airport and because you've been checked at Pikeville, you won't have to go into any further checks at the other airport, whatever airport you connect up with.
Since your meeting of two days ago, did you indicate to the city manager Donovan Blackman any action that he should take as the next step in this effort?
Well, we had a meeting yesterday with our legislators to discuss the airport and securing some of these finances and Donovan's pretty well on the ball with all this which we do encourage him to seek the money. Chamber of Commerce is actively going out and working on the travel bank.
I've had an opportunity in the past on this program, or a program similar to it, to ask Donovan about his feelings about the efforts made at the Expo Center as far as concerts and shows are concerned. This is my first opportunity to ask someone who gives Donovan permission to do what he does.
Okay.
What is the reaction on the commission to some of the most recent shows and concerts?
Well, I was able to attend the one Darius Reckord concert and as a personal reaction, I really enjoyed it. A little bit disappointed in the turnout but it was tremendous. And you know, I wanna say something about this Expo Center.
Certainly.
You know, this facility gives us a quality of life that you know, you would have to go to Lexington, Louisville or some other city to have. And I think eastern Kentuckians deserve this quality of life. Our children have opportunity to visit and see like Carrie Underwood and you know, be a lifetime memory for them. And also it has a, well, the early studies said that it had a $10 million economic impact on our local community but that is moving upward and it's closer to $20 million impact on our local community right now. So it is a very important part of the Pikeville economy and the region economy.
The next entertainment show that will show up at the Expo, November 13th I believe, Lady Antebellum.
It is. And ticket sales are pretty brisk for that one. I think they may have a thousand left and Steve St. John said they were right on schedule with the ticket sales and it looked like it was gonna be a sellout. So I encourage you, if you wanna go see that, you better hurry and get a ticket.
I like to keep it real Barry and let me go at it from this angle. At the very beginning of the day-to-day operations assumed by the city of Pikeville, there may have been some disappointments as to the shows, whether or not they met expectations, whether or not they were economically feasible or not. At any point did you sense on the city commission any reluctance to proceed after the first two or three shows?
No, no. And the reason being Homer, this Expo Center brings, you know, on the down year, the previous year before that we took it over was a very down year for the Expo Center but the Expo Center still brought 110,000 people to the city of Pikeville. And you know, we may have a, you know, the Big and Rich Show was a disappointment but you have those and you know, we realize that and you know, it'll take time but you could probably see upwards of maybe 200,000 people a year come to Pikeville just simply to go to the Expo Center to see one of those shows. And two, the Expo Center not only does that but they do banquets, weddings and just conferences and just a whole gambit of things that they do to make money on the side.
I'd like to hear you tell me that the city commission, city of Pikeville does not rubber stamp Donovan Blackman. He brings an idea in and you say, okay, go with it. Do you grill him? Do you make him come up with justification? Does he earn his money?
He earns his money, believe me. And you know, anybody throws an idea out back there, you know, it gets chewed on pretty good.
As it should.
As it should. I mean, you know, like I say, we have a lot of respect for each other and you know, we come from different walks in life and we're able to get a holistic view of a problem and/or a situation. One of the things that, you know, we discussed back there was Scholar House. And you know, that was something that, you know, I was real passionate about because this is a program that, there'll be a dormitory bill down on the Sade Avenue property and it is for single mothers. And you know, that's something very important to me because you know, single mothers, if they have one child, well, let me back up just a little bit.
Sure.
Let me digress a little bit. You know, after 10 years after welfare reform, did a lot and actually it's been very successful. Does a lot to bring children out of poverty because a mother goes to work and a lot of times those mothers progress very well. But what has been found is that a mother that has one child, if she can get educated and go to work, her chances of success are very good. If she has two children, that success rate goes down a little bit but she is still able to be successful or it may even be a he. But it's also found that once a mother has three children, a single mother has three children, it becomes almost impossible with childcare, with depression and you know, the whole deck stacked against her at that point. So you know, this is something I was very passionate about.
This is another initiative of the city of Pikeville?
Yeah, and we were partnering with Pikeville College but Scholar House will be independent of Pikeville College in the city of Pikeville and will serve students that will go to Pikeville or University of Pikeville, sorry. I owe about $10. There's a $5 fine every time you say Pikeville College.
James Hurley's listening, I'm sure.
Yeah, but this Scholar House will serve our University of Pikeville and Big Sandy Technical College.
What's the genesis of the title Scholar House or Scholar's?
Well, I'm not sure but you know, it's bringing in of these single parents and...
Helping them move along the educational trail.
Yeah, yeah, but let me get back just one more thing on this.
Sure.
You know, we were really wanting that for retail down there.
You're talking about the property across from Hardee's?
Yeah, Sade Avenue property. We're really wanting that for retail because you know, retail comes in, you've got occupational tax, you've got more people coming into the town and you've got more services that can be provided. But you know, Scholar House came and you know, I was passionate about it but you know, we still wanted to retail. Mayor Justice and Jimmy Carter said, well, I wonder if we just put retail in the bottom? And when we had our meeting with Pikeville College, the architect was there and you know, this came up and we discussed it a little bit and it was put forth, could we put retail in the bottom? And you know, since a nonprofit is gonna have to take this over, you know, he was ecstatic about that because something that they had never thought about, you know, putting retail in the bottom part of Scholar House and using the rent to supplement the program was something they had never thought about and you know...
Have the vendors or businesses been chosen for the retail sector?
No, not yet. And probably it'll be June before they can get started on that. And it's gonna be a very, very good program and from what I understand, there's already a lot of interest in it and they could probably fill it up if it was here today. And it'll be, it'll start out with 40 students and on average, those students have, range from one to one and a half kids, well, they say one and one and a half kids so you know, some will have two, some will have one.
Certainly. We're talking with city commissioner Barry Chaney last night, last night relative to the day that we're taping which is the 24th I believe. A doubleheader event in downtown Pikeville, were you a part of that celebration? The Nightmare on Main and the Halloween scavenger hunt?
No, no Homer, again, I was working. You know, I took an evening job so I could make it to some meetings during the morning that we had set up and then you know, on this particular shift I'm on, I've got Sundays and Mondays off so I can attend church and I can make it to my commission meetings and I won't have to spend my vacation days and personal days doing that which I've done.
Let me report to you then, that I've heard, it's been told to me that it was a rousing success, huge crowds, a lot of fun.
Yeah, well now, I called, last night I got the call Commissioner Lane, it wasn't that late and he was a Marine down there and he was talking about the crowd and what a good time he had and I put a call in to Batman and he said it was wonderful, that Donovan won his Batman.
If you didn't tell it, I was going to. I saw the pictures this morning. Very good by the way.
Yeah, and then I called our Workaholic Jesse Bowling.
Uh huh. Special Events Director?
Yes, and he was ecstatic about the crowd. It was bigger than last year and he estimated about 15,000.
Isn't that something?
And I was talking to Al and I think they said that they were around the block at the Expo Center. It was something to see.
Well, I must say you look very pleased with all that reporting back to you.
Oh, I am very pleased. I was telling Al, I hope that there's not an obesity study on children this week.
The reference there being to the candy passed out, I assume?
Yes, sir.
October 31st has been designated in Pike County, city of Pikeville, Coeur d'Alene, O'Horn City as Trick or Treat Day. Any special instructions from the city commissioner of Pikeville about that event?
Well, be safe, watch your kids, go through your candy bag, make sure there's nothing in there you don't want and just have a good time. I'm gonna sit out there in my driveway and hand out candy, come by and see me and maybe I'll give you some M&amp;M's or something and if you're a parent and you want a cup of coffee, we'll give you a cup of coffee too while we're there.
There's the open invitation folks to that.
But now I wanna say something about that, usually...
Okay Barry.
Usually we do this on Thursday night and you know, I get complaints because we didn't have Halloween on the 31st, Halloween night. So this year it falls on the 31st and we do it on the 31st and now I'm getting complaints because we didn't do it on Thursday.
You can't please all the people all the time.
No.
I think that statement will cover that.
Yeah.
What else do we have on the agenda here Barry? What's this $53,000 item I'm looking at here? On page two at the top, we're working from the agenda of the Pikeville City Commission. H2O Construction Company.
Let's see here Homer.
City Utility Relocation.
All right, now that is, that's a very important project for the city of Pikeville. That's moving the utility lines where the Hampton Inn is gonna do their expansion. They'll have a 240-room expansion that'll go up there. Those utility lines have to be moved down the way and this is very important for the Expo Center, for Jenny Wiley Theater. And the reason that is, this gives us, this gives us a chance to recruit conferences in this area for those, for the Expo Center and gives us more foot traffic for Jenny Wiley Theater.
Jenny Wiley Theater Building, have there been any subsequent meetings with architects or at planning stage?
Well, now we did have, we did have a meeting, I think it was about two weeks ago and I was, I'm on that board, I got to attend and the architect asked for a wish list and he said the reason we did that, we asked for a wish list of what you wanted and then we had to go through and talk about what we could live without so that's ongoing. But it was reported in the paper that that could cost $4 million but it's not gonna cost $4 million.
The wish list?
The wish list, you know, if everything on there, it could run $4 million.
But you don't foresee that?
No, no. We're pretty frugal on the city commission and we'll pinch every penny.
I see here an item, Dallas Lane has won a wonderful award, Kiwaning of the Year.
Now, I wanna say something about Dallas Lane.
All right.
I knew him by reputation...
He's our neighbor by the way, at the radio station.
He's a great guy, but I knew him by reputation only before I was elected city commissioner and since I've been elected city commissioner and gotten to know him, we've talked a lot and run around some together, visited different things together. He is a wonderful person, a very fine man and he has a heart for this city that's unbelievable as do, as does us all but you know, Dallas is just a special guy.
Evidently.
Yeah.
And we wanna say congratulations to him also. Do you find it a satisfying experience Barry Chaney working on the city commission or is, I don't wanna say a drudge, I'm sure you wouldn't admit to that to begin with, but is it satisfying to you?
It's very satisfying to me. You know, when you're able to help people and see things happen and evolve that you've had a part in, I mean, it's very satisfying. And you know, as long as I feel that I have something to contribute and that the vision that I have is a vision that's best for the city of Pikeville, you know, I'm gonna try to keep on serving and it'll be, you know, it'll be up to the voters whether or not they wanna keep me or not but it's something that the more that you do it, the more passionate you get about it and the more that you wanna see things happen. And one of the things that we're passionate about is for Pikeville to grow and not only Pikeville but our whole region. You know, we are a regional hub for a 50-mile radius. In that 50-mile radius, there's 250,000 people and you know, we are just now becoming what a regional hub should be. The growth that we're having now in the next two years, when all, when a lot of this construction settles, there's gonna be over 1,400 new jobs here just in the city limits of Pikeville. We're gonna need people to fill those jobs. We're gonna need a place for those people to live which brings Marion's Branch into play. You know, and it's just an exciting time, a lot of challenges, a lot of work to be done, a lot of research that still has to be done. You know, none of us wants to make a decision off the cuff, you know, so we research things, we read and Donovan keeps us busy with information. So it's pretty exciting and very rewarding.
As far as concern about whether the voters of Pikeville are pleased with your effort on the city commission, I can only point to the fact you're in your third term, fifth year, so evidently you must be doing something right.
Well, I hope so. You know, it's, to get elected and to be re-elected is humbling and you know, and it's a privilege to, well, to understand how government works, you know, nobody likes to pay taxes and you know, I've told this story before that, you know, I get my school tax bill and I grumble a little bit because it's high, you know, and then you know, I get thinking, you know, my son was able to go to DeBrye University and did very well there. Senior project is on display at the library at DeBrye and you know, I realize that had it not been for the school that he went to, he wouldn't have been equipped for college. So you know, I look at now, you know, after thinking that way, I look more at the tax that I'm paying every year as an investment and it's not only investment in my son but it's in an investment in the future of Pike County because the better trained we are... Because the better trained we are, the better we, the better we can grow, the better we can serve our, our community. And, you know, one of the things I'd like to see our, our school systems emphasize would be the sciences, technology, engineering, and math degrees. Prepare our children for those things because that's, that's something we're lacking nationwide, especially in the technology field. Today, it's understood that 50% of available jobs in America today require some type of technology training. And in 2015, that's going to be 75% of those jobs are going to require technology training. And, you know, we, we've got to do more to get our kids prepared for that. You know, we've got to build our education system. I'd like to see, you know, more done with technology. I'd like to be able, for the city to be able to recruit technology companies in here. And one of the ways you do that is if you get the training available and the technology companies will come. And the reason I want to see, I'm so big on technology, Homer, is that this past year, the study was done, seven out of the top 10 cities grew on the back of technology. One small town in Texas increased its population and grew by 94%. Small town in New York State is being called the Silicon Valley of the East. And I liked what Hal Rogers had to say the other day. He said he could foresee that the Pikeville area being the Silicon Valley, or Silicon Hollow. You know, and that's, that's not a stretch, you know. And it's an economy that has no wiles and requires no roads and is open to the world. And one of the things that people don't realize is when you're, when you're a city and you're competing, you're not just competing against 492 cities in Kentucky. You're competing against all the cities in West Virginia, all the cities in, in Virginia, in fact, all the cities in the country and beyond. You're, you're really competing globally. And, you know, I know I read an article by Richard M. Daley and one of the things he'd done when he was mayor of Chicago was to think globally. And he was able to, to keep Chicago Bible house by thinking globally and bringing mayors in from around the country that had the same vision that he had about global expansion and bringing in business and trade from around the world.
Your passion is starting to come through to me. Unfortunately, the clock is going to get us on this one. You, you've been taking instruction courses from the Donovan Blackburn School of Public Speaking. You're just getting warmed up to the subject. I hope you know something more now about Barry Chaney, Pikeville City Commissioner. Barry, it was a pleasure talking with you and I hope this is not the last time.
Oh, it won't be, Homer.
It's a wonderful experience. We'll talk more about Pikeville, our city.
Okay, thank you, Homer.
This is Homer Owens for Pike TV, the Pikeville City Commissioner Report.